Administrative decision-making case. It's not, I wouldn't read it particularly as a motion. I think it's sort of an, I understood it to be an advanced statement of a position that he either wanted to express in writing or that he intended to express during any testimony he gave during the, um, the public meeting.
Okay.
If, if the board wishes to address, if the board wants me to address the legal question now, I certainly can. If you want to hear from Mr. Oliva before you have me address the legal question, I'm happy to do so. I did have the chance. I, I appreciate, I appreciate the question being raised in advance as it gave me the chance to look at it. And I've had the chance to, and I'm, I'm prepared to, you know, provide advice to the board, whether the board wants me to provide that advice publicly, or whether the board, because it's legal advice, wants to go into closed session, is the board's call. I, 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 you know, I'll refer to the board in terms of what it finds most useful.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, at this point, I would like to get advice from all members of the board, um, starting with Ed on your thoughts based on what Mr. Moore stated.
Sure. Um, I agree with, with as far as, um, basically, the way that I read it, it looked like it was a motion that we wouldn't hear the case or we didn't have jurisdiction. So I would think that we should handle it up front, separate from the case. And then however it's decided, move forward either onto the next item or continue on with this one.
Okay. Thank you. Tudie, your thoughts?
I would like to hear from Mr. Moore initially, please. That would be my suggestion. Let, let us hear from Mr. Moore, what his, uh, advice to the board is, and then we can decide whether we move forward.
Okay. Thank you. And Kevin?
Find more about Mr. Moore's, uh, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Anyway, you know, I would like to know, uh, more about, uh, the jurisdiction concern. Uh, however, um, Mr. Moore in the past has been, um, on target as far as when he has mentioned, we possibly would want to listen to something in a closed case, or closed manner, a closed session. And in this case, it might behoove us to listen to that, uh, advice, uh, in a closed session.
Kevin? Thank you, Kevin. I would prefer, I would like to refer to the vice chair for advice on open or closed.
I would go with whatever Mr. Moore is comfortable with. Um, I would prefer open.
I, I'm, I'm comfortable with whatever the board prefers. Um, you know, the, the, the board, uh, has every right under the open meetings act to go into closed session and receive legal advice. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that it's appropriate or inappropriate here. Um, the board does occasionally ask questions typically on evidentiary matters in open session, um, in terms of legal issues on evidence. Um, really, I, I'm, I'm fine with whatever the board is comfortable with. I understand that the board is ultimately going to be addressing the issue publicly anyway.
Right. Yes. And with that, Mr. Moore, I, I would like to publicly, um, move forward with getting some advice and comments from you, and do it in an open forum.
Right. So what, what, what Mr. Oliva has raised is essentially the, the council's, um, reservation to itself, um, under the, under 16.200A, um, of the ability to grant a variance to a government use. Um, this school project, um, seems to qualify as a government use. However, um, variances under, um, the very definition of variances in the Howard County zoning regulations can't be granted in a district for which, um, FDP's, uh, final development plans, um, control the bulk regulations. This property, um, is controlled i- in Newtown by a final development plan. So a variance actually isn't what can be granted and actually isn't what pending before the board. What's pending before the board, um, is not a variance which, for which the council has, has reserved to itself the authority. It is instead under Howard County zoning regulations 1250G4, an adjustment, um, that the planning board can make when it's considering a site development plan, um, to allow, among other things, changes to the bulk requirements for a lot or parcel which differ from those required by the applicable final development plan. So it's, I understand that it looks a lot like a variance outside of these regulations and outside of the definition of a variance. This kind of a change in a different location, um, conducted under a different part of the regulations would in fact probably be considered as a variance. Without going into the distinctions that one might make between an adjustment and a variance, this is controlled by Howard County zoning regulations 1250G4, is properly before the planning board as part of the site development process. Um, but I fully understand what, where the question comes from, um, given the, given, given the, uh, the school property at issue. But I respectfully disagree with the assertion that this is one of, this is within the scope of variances that the council has reserved to itself.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Um, and with that, I will, uh, motion that we move forward.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? All right, we will move forward. Thank you. We will move forward with the staff report.
Good evening. I will start the presentation once my PowerPoint is, is in, okay. Okay. Can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes, thank you.
I can see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Derek Jones of the Department of Planning and Zoning. Tonight's project is a site plan modification for Hammond High School, an existing public school, okay, in the Kingsville Travis community of Columbia. The Apple Kennedy Howard County Public School System. The purpose of this meeting is to request planning board approval for building additions and related site improvements to the school's campus and for an adjustment to the lot coverage requirement. This plan modification is subject to the school site's open space land use areas in accordance with final development plan 158A and section 125OG of the zoning regulations. Not advancing. I'm sorry, my, uh, slides aren't advancing. My apologies.
No problem.
Go ahead, Derek. Which slide do you need?
Slide two.
Can you see the map that's up now?
It's still on my slide one. I, I don't see a map.
Your screen might be frozen. The map is up now. I have it up.
I do not see the map, Lisa.
You can't see it?
No. I see page, um, first page.
So what I'm noticing is that I'm able to flip through the, the pages myself. So maybe it's an option for everybody to be able to flip through and go to the next slide. And, uh, maybe Derek can just, uh, give indication that, you know, I'm going to the next slide as he's going through his presentation. Is everybody able to see a, a up and down ticker?
Yeah.
Go to the next page.
I'll just.
So down arrow worked for me.
I think I have the power, and if you want me to, um, try to, but, uh, put it, give me, um, control and I can, uh, put it up. Just have to, to find it.
I think that would be helpful. I'm not able to move my screen at all. Okay, Amy, you're better now.
Derek, I don't have the final version. I have one, um, so I don't have the final map. So you'll just, uh, what's that?
Since you can go up and down, if you just share your screen.
Yeah, I have to do that still. I'm just saying I didn't have the final one with the final map in it.
Oh, no. You control his.
Oh, I can?
You can. To the left of the thing, there's like a little bar with, uh, an up and a down with a, like a one in it.
Okay, Lisa, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm sorry. I, I didn't know. I, I had the bar. I'm sorry, everyone. I.
That's okay.
All right. Then I'll send it back.
I'm just, I'm just used to clicking the arrows, you know, on the keyboard. I.
I know. I've been there, Derek. It's fine.
All right. Okay.
It's no problem. I see the map now. No problem.
All right. Okay.
No problem at all, Derek. We see the map.
All right. Thank you. Hammond High School, Hammond High School is located at 880 Guilford Road, south of Route 32 and west where Brooklyn Parkway terminates at Guilford Road. It is situated in the residential area and surrounded by open space land, single family homes and a church property. The public notice poster regarding tonight's meeting was placed at the school site, perpendicular to Guilford Road, 15 days prior to tonight's meeting. For contextual purposes, I've included this area photo of the Hammond High School campus as it is today. The school was originally constructed in 1976 and has had three additions and a series of renovations since that time. Building is one-story, contains 197,023 square feet of floor space, parking lot surfaces, athletic fields, tennis courts, and a stadium with bleacher seating. Next is the project proposal. For this SPP modification, the scope of work proposed for Hammond High School should include the following activities: demolish two sections of the school, construct new building additions, redesign the parking, I'm sorry, redesign the bus parking area, improve the parking lot and student drop-off area, cave a new service entrance, construct two new patios for outdoor classroom and dining, upgrade the existing athletic field stadium with new bleachers, press box, ticket, concession stand and restroom facility, and improve ADA access to the athletic fields. This is an illustrative, uh, site plan courtesy of the project's architect depicting the proposed improvements to the school campus. These renovations and additions will address efficiencies of the existing building and improve circulation, and improve site circulation. The front of the building will be demolished to construct a two-story addition to include administrative offices and cafeteria and a mechanical plant on the ground floor and classrooms on the second floor. The second floor of this addition will be a partial addition, um, occupying 31,0935 square feet of floor space. The rear of the building will also be to demolish to construct in addition to replace an undersized physical education support program with more square footage and to meet current curriculum needs. Upon completion, the 230,460 square foot school will be designed to capacity of 1,420 students, which will be a 200-seat capacity increase from the current capacity. In addition, uh, proposal includes redesigning, um, the student drop-off and pickup area, improving and enlarging the bus parking area at the front of the school, converting the bus driver's practicing lot on the west side of the school site into 116 additional parking spaces for students and staff. And as I said, uh, earlier, um, other, um, support, uh, improvements, um, to the school site, including the athletic fields. Um, just to, uh, highlight the areas shaded in the color already proposed building additions. This slide is an architectural rendering featuring the front of the school building after the building additions and the renovations are completed. The review of this modified, uh, site development plan is subject to the following development criteria established under FDP 158A. First permitted uses: school sites are permitted uses for open space land use areas. Setback requirements: structure should not be within 30 feet of the right-of-way of any public street, road, or highway, or 25 feet of any property line. Proposed building additions and the rebuild comply with these setbacks. Height: There is no height limitation on buildings or structures. If improvements are constructed in accordance with an SPP approved by the planning board. Coverage: no more than 10% of the land should be covered by buildings or major structures except in accordance with an SPP as approved by the planning board. Coverage is currently at 14 and a half percent. Proposed building additions and site improvements will increase the coverage to 17.4%. Parking: For the FDP for open space land use areas, no parking requirements are imposed upon any of the land devoted to open space uses. However, the planning board may impose parking requirements for structures on open space at the time the site development plan is submitted for approval. Hammond High School has 330 existing parking spaces. A total of 374 parking spaces will be provided after the improvements are complete. As stated earlier, the existing school building exceeds a 10% coverage requirement. Pursuant to section 125OG4D of the zoning regulations, the planning board may grant a coverage adjustment if the adjustment will not alter the character of the neighborhood or area in which the property is located, will not impair, will not impair the appropriate use or development of adjacent property, and will not be detrimental to the public welfare, and the adjustment is needed due to practical difficulties or hardships, and/or results in bad design than what would be allowed by strict compliance with the development criteria. Staff evaluate the applicant's adjustment request and have made the following determination. As you face the school from Guilford Road, there is a squashed area in a stream valley to the right on a land-owned body Columbia Association. To the left is the South Columbia Baptist Church with a tree line that buffers this property from the school. Directly across from the school are two residential lots buffered with mature trees between it and the road. Increasing coverage will not result in an increased width of the building, thus not impacting existing size setbacks with adjacent properties, nor will it impact existing landscape buffers on and around the site. Proposed plan also includes additional landscaping, uh, to, uh. Additional landscaping to the existing trees along Guilford Road that will lessen the visual impact of the school from those properties on the north side of Guilford Road. The proposed building modifications and additional site landscaping improvements will therefore not alter the character of the neighborhood, impact the use or, or development, and will not be detrimental to the public welfare. And lastly, um, to address the second, uh, criterion, uh, the front of the school building, uh, shall be demolished, built to expand outward by approximately 16 feet, and the rear of the building will be modified into demolition of a portion of the rear, rebuilt with an addition. This, the approval of this adjustment will allow the school system to implement their plans to expand floor space for growing enrollment and to meet curriculum and operational needs for students and staff. Strict compliance with the 10% lot coverage will require areas of existing coverage structure to be removed, not replaced, and for all of the new work to be done as a second level addition. The proposed plan represents a better design because it not only allows for the school system to meet their enrollment needs, but it results in what we call a new front door for the school and the community and adds additional outdoor learning spaces to enrich your overall curriculum. Uh, can everyone hear me?
I can hear you. I can hear.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, uh, I hit the wrong button. Uh, in, in closing, uh, the, uh, in closing, we recommend an approval to the plan modification for SPP 196018, um, subject to, uh, any conditions the planning board may impose. And I would like to, uh, thank the school system, office of planning and instruction, um, of the school system, SEI Architects, and Fisher-Carson Potter, civil engineer for the data they provided, uh, to help us evaluate this plan modification. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll just move right ahead with the petitioner and then take questions after that.
I may have to say hello again.
Derek?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Derek, who's the petitioner?
Stephanie.
Thank you. Go ahead, Stephanie. Stephanie?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Stephanie.
Oh, okay. All righty. I am here. Did you need me to just?
Do you have anything to add?
Start or?
Yeah. Do you have anything to add?
Uh, the only thing I would have to add is, uh, I, I reiterate everything that Derek had mentioned. I know that we have been through, um, more than a year of presentations and, uh, conversations with multiple agencies. We met last year in May with the Village Board of, um, Kingsville Travis to present the plan so that they were aware of what was being done and, uh, the improvements that we were suggesting to the property prior to us even submitting to the county for review. Uh, we've also had multiple meetings with the community as well, which is part of the school system's requirements, so that everybody's aware of things that are going on and they involve the school system and the design of the school as well. Um, and I know that, uh, there have been several things we've considered along the way. We actually looked into doing a traffic signal, which was, uh, not something that the county felt was required, uh, since the main traffic was at the time the school, uh, opened and school closed. So they didn't see the need for a traffic signal at that location. So we've looked at a lot of things, um, along the way and been involved with the county through the school system, through, um, public works, land development. Everybody's been involved with a lot of the decisions that have been made about what we are doing on the site. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there in the beginning. Um, and Derek did a great presentation of what we're proposing on the site. Um, the only thing other than that that I would add is that, uh, the school site now does not have stormwater management. So one of the things that was done along the way was we proposed stormwater management along with some paving removal and what they used to use for a bus training area is now been, uh, made parking spaces to kind of provide them with more area for parking in addition to the areas we had to, well, to make up for the areas we had to remove to provide stormwater management on the site. And I'll take any questions in addition to that that you have.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner or staff from the board?
No questions here.
I'll wait for now.
Okay. Kevin?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. Uh, Madam Roberts, I just wanted to find out more about, uh, the parking. Supposedly there's a, um, sufficient, uh, increase in parking. And I'm looking at the, uh, plan and I'm just trying to figure out where exactly is that increase coming from? Where is that located, the new parking?
The main increase is from what used to be, what used to be the, uh, bus training area was up by the northwest corner of the property. And it, instead of being the bus training area, it's now become parking space.
I see. I see. Okay. That wasn't always parking.
And we had to, yeah, we had to remove some in order to provide stormwater management. And we were able to gain them back and provide some additional in the area where they did the bus training initially.
Fantastic. The, um, since we're speaking about stormwater management, um, the stormwater management, uh, facilities that you're, uh, going to put on the property, uh, is that relieving the water just from, uh, the school? Or is it re-circumvating the water through the neighborhood and, and to, uh, final point or destination? Or is it just right there on the property?
It's existing. There is a, there was storm drainage on the property. There just wasn't stormwater management. Uh, so we have modified the storm drain system so that it provided additional, provided areas for stormwater management. And in the process, it all ends up going in the same place it went before at the same existing outfall.
Okay.
It's just collected and treated.
Okay, good. It's not being let out into a neighborhoods nearby that was not accustomed to receiving water before, correct?
No, it's going onto the CA property to the west. Um, and then it eventually gets into the stream, into the stream that's in that property.
Okay, great, great. Um.
Same as it did before.
Any, um, treatment or filtering happening from that large parking lot before the water hits the stream?
Yes, it's going through the two-biar retentions that we have. And the area that's not picked up by the two-biar retention facilities is picked up from some, uh, units called solteras that are like inlet structures that filter the water and then they overflow into the existing storm drain system.
Okay, great, great. Um, I noticed you, uh, mentioned lead certification was, uh, being sought. Uh, are you going for the top? Or are you going to go midway as far as certifications? Silver, gold, platinum?
I believe that we are going for silver. Uh, I know that, uh, the architect would know better the status of that, but I believe that's what we are going.
Okay. Um, just from my information, on a project where you're, um, building on to the property, uh, is it just, uh, certification for the piece that's built? Or are you doing some internal modifications to the existing building to bring that, uh, quality level up or lead certification also?
I think that would be a better question for the architect.
Okay. Um, we'll, we'll get back to that. Uh, I believe the last question I had was, the facility for, um, uh, out in the field for refreshments, uh, that building, in my understanding, will have restrooms in it now, so you don't have to go inside the main building for restrooms?
Yes, it is, uh, intended to have restrooms in it.
Excellent, excellent. Um, let's see, anything else? Uh, it mentioned something about, uh, paving to give better access to some of the fields that are farther away from the building. Uh, can you describe, uh, exactly how that's going to work? Is it going around the back of the baseball fields to get to some of the areas or? around the back of the baseball fields to get to some of the areas or you cutting straight through near the track? How is that going to work?
Well, it's really an improvement to what is there. Uh, a lot of the improvements were really to, um, give ADA access, um, to the, the bleachers. So there's been a number of improvements that are happening mainly to the visitor side, but there are also improvements to the home side.
Okay, so you're putting pathways, better pathways through the entire property? Access points?
Well, we're, we're, we are improving the access points that do exist now. They've been widened, uh, somewhat. Um, the, similar in location to where they were previous. They're just being, uh, just slightly modified, really.
Okay. Um, there are a number of, um, trailers parked on the property. Are those for your crew that are going to be working out there or are those actually used during the regular school day for, for an end? If, uh, the property is remodeled or renovated, will those go away or you anticipate those remaining?
Uh, I assume you're talking about in front of the building?
Uh, behind.
Because there are, uh, a couple of portable classrooms that are back there.
There's about six others back. There has to be two on the, um, the, the entryway to the, uh, gym facility, but then farther over, uh, behind, oh, let's see. Uh, let's see. If you're looking at the front of the school building, uh, to the left rear, lots and lots of, uh, trailers back there. Has to be at least six maybe.
I, well, I actually counted four, sir, when I visited the site, yeah.
Great, great, great. Do those remain or do those go away?
I would imagine that the, I, I've not been out on the site recently, uh, since all of COVID started. Uh, Dave Fisher might, uh, know the answer to this a little better. Um, uh, I would imagine that they are for construction. Uh, because I know that the construction crew was going to be bringing in trailers that, and if they would definitely intend to go away because we're not planning to have anything like that on the site.
Excellent.
So I imagine they have probably just started bringing some things in.
Okay. Um, I promise, Madam Chair, uh, last question. Uh, the restrooms that are, uh, accessible from the gym fields currently, uh, they're in really bad condition, really bad condition. I was just wondering, are you going to be renovating, uh, those?
Like I said, uh, anything interior wise is probably a better question for the, uh, architect. But I know a lot of those facilities are being, um, renovated on the backside of the building, pretty much, uh, pretty much most of the building. But, um, like I said, he would be better suited to tell you interior, um, building type of question.
Okay, so.
I think Mr. Lubley from the school district is, uh, wanting to speak.
Mr. Lubley, are you there?
I am. Thank you very much for the opportunity to bring this in front of the planning board tonight. Um, I believe I can answer several of the questions that were just recently posed. For state funding for our school projects, we are required to achieve a silver, uh, lead, a silver level lead certification on new facilities. While this is not a new facility, Howard County Public School System has made it a priority to try and chase sustainability on all of our projects, including our additions and renovations. So we are trying to obtain at least a lead certification. However, most of our projects do overachieve that certification and do obtain a lead silver. While we would like to strive for the top of the platinum, that is becoming much very difficult, um, and much more difficult with the newer versions of lead to achieve, especially on existing facilities. With regards to the trailers that you had mentioned, there are several different trailers that are on site. There are trailers that were, are going to be located at the front of the school. Those are specifically for our contractors and those will be there for their use only. That is their storage trailers as well as their trailers that they can meet in with their individual teams. In the rear of the facility, there are a few existing portable classrooms. Those classrooms are in use by the school now. It is a part of this project that in the design, we are capturing those spaces and those portable classrooms will be removed after the building. There are a few additional trailers that you might be referencing in the back of the facility that are just recently arriving. Those are for a 12-classroom modular. That 12-classroom modular is specifically for swing space for the construction. We are doing what is called an occupied renovation. That means the school will be occupied as we're going through an individual phases in renovating. In order to do that, we need to provide classroom space for the school to still hold the full amount of school, students, whatever they, that may look like here in the fall. But as school goes on, this is a three-year project. So we are looking to maintain the level that they currently have and provide in the classrooms they have, which is why we are looking to provide that 12-classroom modular. That as well is only for the swing space and it will be removed after, uh, this project. So with the 1420 that Mr. Jones noted as our capacity of this project, it is our plan to remove all modulators from this and the portable classrooms from this project.
Fantastic. I appreciate the feedback. Um, just curious, um, some of the projects that have come before us in the past have only taken, um, you know, a year. I'm just curious, why in three years?
The three years, sorry, a little bit earlier. The three years are primarily due to two factors. One, the size of the facility and then two, again, the phased wall occupied. If we were similar to Montgomery County and we had holding schools, we could move the entire school from one facility to another and cut down on our construction time. Unfortunately, we don't have a large enough facility that we could move the entire school out. So we do, all of our renovations are primarily occupied renovations. Um, and that means we can only take off chunks at a time. We do try and capture as much as we can during the summers and the spring and winter holidays. But the majority of the work does happen during the school year, which limits what we can do, which is extends out the length of the project.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Now, thank you, Kevin. Great questions. Any other questions from the board? Okay, Lisa, do we have anybody signed up for testament, public testimony?
Do. Um, bear with me just one second.
No problem.
Okay, I have Chris Aliva. Mr. Aliva, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can. Give me one second before you start, please.
I'm sorry?
One second before you start.
O- okay, you, you got me?
Uh, okay, state your name and address, please.
Sure. My name's Christopher Aliva. Uh, 10848 Harmel Drive, Columbia, Maryland, 21044.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. And, uh, I want to thank Mr. Moore for his very concise advice here. Um, he, uh, emailed me before the meeting here and, uh, I emailed him back. He asked me for the case in Merrittsville, which occurred in 2003, which is in my written testimony. Um, I have a Baltimore Sun article in front of me here and it says Citizens for Adequate School Facilities was hoping to appear before the Howard County Circuit Court Judge Dudley to argue against the county council decision to grant exceptions to regulations for the new high school in Merrittsville. But its director Chuck Lacy instead fanned himself before the judge asking the question, can anyone be here at all? Um, the issue here is this. Um, what transpires is that you guys are hearing this right now. I, I presume I'm in favor of this, okay? I'm not opposed to this. I'm raising this issue because it's a jurisdictional matter. And people will be opposed to these things. There's a lot of schools in Columbia. And, uh, in any event, so suppose I don't like this and then I appeal your decision to the Board of Appeals Hearing Examiner. And what's going to happen there? Oh, well then she, or he, um, says, okay, you guys are, you're, you're out of your minds. All right, well then I appeal it to the Board of Appeals. The whole idea by having it before the county council is it's really an unappealable decision. And when Mr. Jones was explaining that this is in the public welfare, well, a school has a much different metric of public welfare. It's not only whether it's going to affect the meaning of the adjoining properties, it's a whole, um, uh, menu of things that are considered. And accordingly, what happened was up at Merrittsville is the case was dismissed. And, uh, Judge Dudley ruled that in fact, there's no, the, the Howard County government has no obligation, nor are they bound to get any variance whatsoever. Now, we've done this this way and, and by statutory design, the county council does grant these for that very reason. Because essentially, the county council's decision is not appealable. And in this case, that is in the public interest. I would add another thing as well. Uh, Mr., uh, Moore said, um, that this somehow, um, does not come under it because it's in the NT zone and 125 rules. Um, I don't think that's free from doubt. Under 125D6, upon recordation of an FDP, it has the full force and effect of a zoning regulation. And if you look at 16301, it's here, um, within the spirit of the zoning regulations. So what happens is when the FDP is recorded, it becomes the zoning regulation. So as I said, I'm, I'm not sure that this matter is completely, um, clear in my mind. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Aliva. Lisa, anyone else signed up for testimony?
Okay, next we have Kristen Russell. And I will unmute her. Kristen, are you there?
Hi. Yes, can you hear me?
Can. Give me one second. Okay, state your name and address, please.
Sure. Kristen Russell, on behalf of Columbia Association, 6310 Hillside Court in Columbia, Maryland.
Go ahead.
Sure. Um, you should have all received a letter from me earlier and I just want to reiterate the points, um, of that letter. Columbia Association. Sorry?
Please continue.
Okay. Um, Columbia Association is supportive of the application before you this evening. We did want to point out two opportunities that we thought were missed with the proposal. Um, the, uh, there is a requirement that no more than 10% of the total lot be covered by buildings or other major structures. And we'd like to point out that there may be opportunities to incorporate usable outdoor space or green roof technology to make up for all or part of that, um, um, lacking number, lacking amount. And second, um, we'd like to ask that the developer coordinate with the Department of Public Works to consider the scope of site improvements so that there may be an opportunity to add sidewalks or side paths leading to the school where there is a current, where there is currently a gap in the sidewalks. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have someone off mute?
Apparently somebody's off mute.
Can you see who the?
I'm trying.
I don't hear it now.
I don't either.
Okay.
Okay, um, so those are the ones that specified what they were testifying about. Now, we have others who signed up and didn't specify.
Okay.
Let's see, Sean Happel, I know. Um, Janet Rollins, Ms. Rollins.
Yes.
Are, are, are you calling to testify about this case?
Uh, no, about the DRA.
Okay, thank you very much. And that's it. Oh, and Mr. Hurwitz, I'm sorry. Mr. Hurwitz, are you there?
Yes, good evening. I, I thought I had checked the right boxes for.
You did. Sorry, I'm looking at like 10 screens at the same time, so.
So, 5681 Harpers Farm, C- Columbia. I guess I'd just like to, for the record, uh, share some of the issues that Mr. Aliva did with the jurisdictional issue. Cause I just want to note that the Talbot Springs Elementary School, for all of its needs, is apparently not coming before you. And the character of the questions that Mr. McIlly asked will have no opportunity to do that for Talbot Springs. On a lot of what I guess he asked really wasn't pertinent to the, uh, decision in 125 that's before you. So I guess it was just for informational purposes. So while we're at it, I'd point out what is the deal with the storage trailers that have been at the Harpers Farm and old Cedar Lane School, looking at the aerials since at least 2006? So there are a lot of things that, as I said, come for you that are interesting, but apparently not in your criteria. And as I said, I assume somehow all these administrative issues for Talbot Springs got resolved in some other way. I just find that interesting that, uh, none of them are going to be resolved publicly. Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's all I have for this case.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, if there aren't any other questions from the board?
So before we go to a question, I would like to ask my question now.
Okay.
And basically it relates to the CA testimony?
Yes.
Would the current plan of the building preclude, um, the sidewalk improvements that they're asking for? Or could, could those improvements be done in parallel or done sometime after the fact? And I guess that would go to the project planner or, um, the architect or the school?
Good evening again. This is Dan Lubley, Acting Director, Capital Planning and Instruction for the school system. The current layout of the, the planned additions and renovations does not, uh, preclude potential sidewalk addition that the CA was referencing. They were identifying, um, I believe I've, I understand that they're identifying additional sidewalk along Guilford Road on the north side, um, between, I think, uh, Carriage Road and Blue Sea. I think those are the names. Um, that is not technically on the school board property. As Toot referenced during the design, there was discussions with the county regarding the traffic as well as a traffic light. I believe sidewalk was mentioned within those. I believe sidewalk was mentioned within those conversations. It was not the primary point of discussion, but that is a point that can be brought back up to Department of Public Works.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Mr. Coleman?
No, that's all.
Okay, with that, do I hear a motion for work session?
I motion we go to work session.
In favor?
Aye.
All right, we are in work session.
Ms. Roberts, I just, can you hear me, Ms. Roberts?
Yes, thank you.
Sure, I just noticed that I was supposed to ask a follow-up question from the architect, from the school architect, and that was regarding the interior restrooms of the old section that's not being rebuilt. Is it too late to ask that question?
Do you want to make a motion to move to work session?
If I could.
There's a second?
We've got a work session, so I can ask my question.
There's a second? Anybody? I second that.
All in favor?
Tudie and Ed?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are out of work session. Go ahead, Kevin, with your question.
Hi, I wanted to ask the architect again about the interior restrooms entered through the back of the building. Will those be updated, renovated, or will they remain the same?
Good evening again, Dan Loubley with the school system. Yes, as part of the renovation portion, we are renovating the entire facility, systemic, the walls, everything. I believe those restrooms that you were talking about go back towards the athletic area. That is part of the facility that is being removed so that the athletic is, the athletic program can be expanded at that back area. So yes, those are specifically being addressed as part of this project.
Fantastic, thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, I'm sorry, Ms. Roberts, thanks for allowing.
All right. So I motion to go back into work session.
I move we go back to work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are back in work session. Kevin, will go ahead and continue?
I'm in favor of the improvements. I like the idea of what Ed brought up as far as, and what CA brought up as far as moving forward in the master plan to get that street updated so that it's more of a complete streets, renovated street. Not exactly sure how it fits into the project process, but if there's any way at all that we can add this, add a mention of that, that would be nice.
Thank you. Think he might be muted.
DPW and whoever else is relevant to it, and see about getting that work planned and scheduled, you know?
I'm sorry, Ed, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you start over for the recording? You were on mute.
Sure, so I agree with Kevin with what he had said. And what I was thinking was along the lines of, is that as part of our motion, that we motion that DPW consider and look at plans for those improvements as time goes along. And a lot of that was precluded on that these improvements won't, or not, those other changes, there's nothing that's precluded by if we go forward with the current plan as it is. So being that there's basically no harm in moving forward, and I know that they're under a time crunch, I don't want to necessarily tie them together, but I would like to suggest that those improvements do happen. That's all.
Thank you. Tudie?
I certainly am in agreement that this project does meet the criteria. The improvements of design, update and usage, and offers growth for enrollment is just stellar for the community. And I too agree that we should involve, make a suggestion, recommendation, that Department of Public Works be involved to see if they could do some connectivity with the sidewalks.
Thank you, Tudie. I'm also in agreement. I would also like, as we move, as they move forward, to look at the two comments from CA. One, looking at the improvements along Guilford Road, as well as possibly as they move forward, looking at the incorporation of some of the outdoor space. As we move forward in technology, it would be great if, you know, Hammond could be on the forefront of that. But not like Ed said, nothing to keep it from moving forward, but just something to look at as they're moving forward. So with that, do, does anyone want to? Tudie, you want to move forward?
Sure, I recommend approval of SDP 96-018 with our stated recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so approved, thank you. Next, we have DRRA. One second, give me one second, I'm sorry. My desk space isn't like when we're live. Give me a second.
Actually, if we could take a couple minutes, I'd appreciate it.
I can't join me yet. All right, it's 8:10. And we're going to move forward with DRRA and the staff report.
Good evening, my name is Peter Conrad and I'm one of the two deputy directors here at the Department of Planning and Zoning. And tonight, the planning commission is being asked to review and provide an advisory recommendation on a request for a first amendment to the Doe-Reagan Development Rights and Responsibilities, or also known as a DRRA, and whether that amendment is consistent with the general plan, Plan Howard 2030. Doe-Reagan Manor was the country home of Charles Carroll III of Carrollton, a signer of the Declaration of Independence for Maryland. And Doe-Reagan Manor is only the, the only home of a signer of the Declaration of Independence that is still in family ownership. The property consists of the historic Doe-Reagan Manor Mansion and its surrounding estate located just south of the Baltimore National Pike, west of Centennial Lane, and east of Follicord Road. The property outlined in red is the West Mount subdivision, which consists of three phases, and this was part of the outcome of the DRRA. Your technical staff report includes several attachments, including Attachment A, which is the original Doe-Reagan DRRA. Attachment B, which is the submitted petition for the First Amendment, which is requesting an extension, a time extension to the original DRRA. And Attachment C is the technical staff report from DPZ from back in April of 2010 to amend the general plan to adjust the planned service area boundary for water and sewer to include a portion of the Doe-Reagan property. And finally, Attachment D is the technical staff report for the planning board's advisory recommendation on the original DRRA, which took place back on June 3, 2010. So the proposal before you would amend the Doe-Reagan DRRA, which again, was originally established in 2010. And currently, it would expire this year on September 23. And so this would be an extension of an additional five years. The extension would also allow the current agreement to remain in place while the final phase of development is completed. And I'd like to point out that the West Mount development can proceed regardless of an amended DRRA. So this proposed five-year extension does not grant any additional development rights. So the requirement in Howard County Code is that for any amendment to a existing DRRA can only proceed once these two, the county council can only occur when a pre-submission community meeting has occurred following the procedures outlined in the subdivision and land development regulations, and when a public meeting before the planning board and an advisory determination by the planning board that the amendment is consistent with the plan. So we've already had the pre-submission community meeting on this petition, and that was held last year on May 23, 2019. So being a relatively complex DRRA, there were a number of background agreements that occurred to get us to this point. Council Bill 9 of 2010, which was adopted on April 5, this was the amendment to the general plan, at that time, General Plan 2000, to adjust the planned service area for water and sewer service to include 221 acres of the Doe-Reagan property. And this is, again, referenced in the technical staff report, Attachment C. Part of the DRRA was focused on a large preservation, agricultural land preservation parcel. So this was codified in a commitment letter on May 18, 2010. The planning board took action on the DRRA originally back on June 17, 2010. And so this was the prior determination that the DRRA was consistent with the general plan. And again, this is found in Attachment D. Council Bill 32 authorized the installment purchase agreement to acquire the previously mentioned 500 acres for an agricultural land preservation easement. The Council Resolution 103, 2010 was the tool that was needed to authorize the execution of the DRRA. This project also involved a change to the zoning map, and so zoning board item 1087, which authorized the change from RCDEO to RED. And finally, the DRRA itself was executed on September 23, 2010. So the original DRRA was determined to be consistent with the 2000 general plan, and these determinations carry over to Plan Howard 2030. As the portion of the property to be developed, which is known as the West Mount subdivision, was then included in the PSA or public service area, and the land use and place type designations did not change. Extending this DRRA remains consistent with the county's general plan place type map as shown in the technical staff report and as was adopted in Plan Howard 2030. So in looking at the general plan and specific policies, there are four policies, general groupings of policies that I would like to bring to your attention. Under Resource Conservation Policy 4.1 is to promote additional agricultural preservation opportunities. And obviously, as I mentioned previously, the DRRA enabled the purchase of development rights of 500 acres of the Doe-Reagan property to put into agricultural preservation. Policy 410 of this chapter called for expanding of existing programs to enhance historic preservation and create a historic preservation plan. The underlying motivation for the DRRA was to establish a mechanism to further preserve the mansion and the property. The underlying motivation for the DRRA was to establish a mechanism to further preserve the mansion and the property around it. Chapter 6 from the Plan Howard 2030 was focused on growth. And Policy 6.1 states that we should be maintaining adequate facilities and services to accommodate growth. And with the PSA expansion for water and sewer, this was extended to serve the West Mount subdivision. Two additional chapters also are consistent, show consistency with the DRRA. And Chapter 8, Public Facilities and Services, Policy 812 was to expand the county park system and recreation facilities. Part of this agreement included the provision of open space adjacent to the Kiwanis-Wallace Park. And Chapter 10, Community Design, Policy 10.1 included a statement to protect and enhance established communities through compatible infill, sustainability improvements, and strategic public investments. And with the establishment of the RED zoning established as part of this process, the DRRA agreement, the West Mount development has a higher proportion of open space as a result. So the Department of Planning recommends a finding of general plan consistency between the proposed amended Development Rights and Responsibility Agreement and Plan Howard 2030.
Thank you. Next with the...
Mr. O, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you. Good evening.
Can you present anything? Should I make you a presenter or...?
I don't think so. I may have to refer back to some of the exhibits Mr. Conrad presented. I think we could do that.
Okay.
Okay. So I wanted to say that Mr. Conrad did a solid job in presenting the issues in this case, as the TSR does as well. The essence of what is before the Planning Board. In 2010, a, what I would call a multifaceted solution for the permanent preservation of Doe-Reagan Manor, the original home of Charles Carroll Carrollton, one of the original signers of the Declaration of Independence, whose Doe-Reagan estate is the last property that is still held in the same family since 1776. The multifaceted approach involved the actions detailed in the TSR on Page 2. It was the Planned Service Area Boundary Amendment that included 221 acres of Doe-Reagan being annexed into the planned service area, a land preservation commitment letter from the Carrolls, this Planning Board's favorable recommendation on the Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement, a installment purchase agreement for the agri-preservation, the authority to execute the DRRA as passed by the Council in CR 103, 2010, and then finally, a decision to rezone the property from RC to RED, which was contained in zoning board case 1098. And then there was finally the DRRA execution on September 23, 2010. The multifaceted deal that was discussed, debated, and ultimately adopted in this DRRA was a 10-year term. Unfortunately, environmental permits and the process to obtain those permits from the federal government caused excessive delays. The 10-year term that was previously thought to be sufficient time to complete this 225-unit subdivision known as West Mount eventually was found to be inadequate. Another five years is expected in order to be able to compete, complete the remaining units of Phase 2 and Phase 3. This change in term, the five years, is the only change being requested in this DRRA. At our pre-submission meeting, there was a lot of discussion about this development and what development in general has meant to the residents of Ellicott City, this area of Ellicott City. This discussion about overcrowded schools and traffic, it was all discussed. What was not discussed was that in 2010, the petitioners in this case, the owners of Doe-Reagan Manor stated that they needed to develop a portion of their property. And under then-then-existing zoning, their then-existing zoning, the entire area of land between Kiwanis-Wallace Park west to Folly Quarter Road is subject to developmental well and septic lots. To avoid that result, the petitioners, the county, and the community had a discussion and eventually crafted this DRRA, preserving Doe-Reagan Manor and its surrounding property in perpetuity. The question before this Planning Board tonight is whether the terms of this preservation that was eventually set forth in the DRRA and this proposed amendment, which seeks to continue that arrangement for another five years, is consistent with the general plan. Mr. Conrad has set forth the policies in the general plan. As I said, I think he did a good job in doing that. I think there is undeniable consistency with the general plan for the myriad of reasons as is presented. In 2010, there was a deal made between the petitioner in this case in Howard County. This planning board blessed that decision. We are here tonight to do nothing more than honor our obligation to complete the terms of that Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement. I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. O.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for the staff or petitioner from the board?
I do.
All right, Ed.
No, and I don't mean to imply that I find any fault with this. But what are the consequences? It states in here that this doesn't change any developmental right. So what are the consequences if this would not go forward?
That's a loaded question. If you look at the different elements of this deal, one was agricultural preservation and the permanent preservation of the surrounding lands around Doe-Reagan Manor. And that was part of the consideration for the deal. That is something that has already been done. If this agreement is not extended, what does that do? I'm not sure. There's a, the community asked a number of questions about this at the pre-submission meeting. I have to tell you, I gave some answers, but they were just guesses. I don't know, frankly. It's a very complex arrangement. I think you're asking probably a more simplistic question, which is, what happens if we, if this agreement is not renewed or extended? And in addition to all the "I don't knows", I can tell you that there are certain obligations contained in the agreement that have still not yet been performed. And so some of those things would never get performed. And so that's, that's the measure of an agreement that has not yet been performed. So I hope that's somewhat of an answer to your question, Mr. Conrad.
It does. Can, do you have, can you list any of the things that wouldn't go forward? I mean, they could still go with the development, and they could still go with the development on the existing plan.
Oh, yeah. No, no, the development itself can happen. So yes, where the rubber meets the road, will houses still be built? Yes, they will. But will the petitioner in this case be able to pay the wastewater mitigation fee that's set forth in the DRRA? That's only by the DRRA. Do they, do they have an obligation to? There's some issues with the transfer of the parkland that is directly next to Kiwanis-Wallace Park. A portion of this goes for the use of Kiwanis-Wallace Park. That, to my knowledge, has not been completely effectuated. And so I don't know what happens to that obligation. The, what else is there? Oh, there's a Restoration and Maintenance Fund that there's, part of, again, another consideration for this DRRA was the obligation of this property owner to utilize some of the profits that they would earn from the development and apply it to restoration and preservation of the manor house. That, a fund has to be created, and I believe $2 million of the net tax profit has to be funneled into that fund. There hasn't been money from the development yet to finance that fund, so that has not yet happened.
Okay, thank you. That's sufficient. That's exactly what I, the kind of information I was looking for. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay.
It's me, Kevin.
Sorry. I didn't see you, so I was looking. You have a question?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. I was playing with the button. Anyway, I, Mr. O, thank you for addressing us this evening. This is Kevin McElly. I just wanted to find out, something that you just mentioned just now was creating a fund. And this fund has to be fulfilled, and profits would go to pay for improvements to the manor house. My understanding is the manor house is where the family lives. So basically, that's for upkeep and maintenance of their home. Is that correct?
Yes, you could look at it that way. Sure.
Okay, okay. Well, that's basically what anyone would do with funds coming into their coffers, is to improve their homes. So that's great. The other question I had was the public feedback. There's lots of development going on surrounding the particular property. Is this DRRA specifically for just that one segment near West Mount? Or does this carry over to any additional pieces of the property?
No, this is just for, and we even say, it would limit it just to West Mount.
Okay.
It's 221 acres. It's the area that was annexed into the planned service area. And that is the only area of Doe-Reagan Manor that is going to be developed. That was the whole foundation of this deal. The idea was, because their existing zoning was rural conservation, there were well and septic lots, they were going to have to put lots wherever they could find lots could park. And that would destroy the entire property and surrounding area, including the area directly adjacent to Doe-Reagan Manor. If you, the Doe-Reagan area property is, is known as an area that's still very much looks like the past. And so there was a public interest in trying to maintain that. This goes back to the preservation or restoration. If the family was going to make money from selling their property, they wanted some of that to go toward the preservation of the manor house and the property, which the government and the community saw as something that the government should act to protect in the name of historic preservation.
Okay, great. And last question, I read through the information, and it definitely seems to me that the county is preparing itself for someday possibly being involved with the historical preservation of the property itself. They get first rights of refusal. Is that it for the property, if the family ever wants to sell it? Is that incorporated in there?
That is not incorporated, to my knowledge, Mr. McElly. You know, the property, the actual, the question, I guess, from, that you, your previous comment about this being their home. It is a private home still. And so at some point in time, I, you know, who can predict what the future holds? But at this point in time, the agreement, and this DRRA is a very essential part of that, requires that this area of Doe-Reagan be kept as is in perpetuity.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, I do want to also add, it's, the obligation is also as to, not just the manor house, but there's a number of other historic buildings on the site as well, and that's also part of the preservation plan. Thank you.
And these other buildings, I'm sorry, I forgot, they're, let me see. Including, Mr. O?
Yes?
Those other buildings include what? I guess that's the question.
Oh, I'm not sure I have the list exactly at hand, but there's a number of outbuildings and quarters and, you know, other, you know, it's a large farm. There were a lot of people, you know, who were, resided on the farm for a number of years, and many of those buildings are stored.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there are any questions.
Can I just, I do have one clarification. It's not really a question, but a clarification, if I may, of Mr. O?
Yes.
During discussions and also brought up very recently with this information, just confirm for the public at large, Mr. O, there will be no connecting to Burnside Drive?
That is correct, Ms. Adler. We, that was a point of, of a big discussion, and it's frankly been a contentious issue back to probably the 70s or even earlier. For those of you, board members who are not familiar, the Chateau Ridge Lake Community borders Doe-Reagan, this area, West Mount. And its only means of ingress and egress is via Burnside Drive to Centennial Lane. If you've ever driven Centennial Lane, Burnside Drive in the intersection, there is, sometimes can be tough to get in and out. The residents of Chateau Ridge Lake Community Association, which I know has sent a letter to the Planning Board, and I think, I'm not going to speak for them, but I would summarize their letter, my words as, maybe echoing what I said, that there was a deal, they want to honor the deal. And, and the deal was that Burnside Drive, which had been closed at that point in time due to the Council Resolution, and it's still closed with the Council Resolution, that, that there may be no connection made to West Mount via Burnside Drive. And this DRRA is an enforceable document that prevents that from happening. We want to extend the agreement, including our prohibition for extending Burnside Drive and the connection until this development is completely finished. And of course, this development is not finished. So I understand the anxiety, although I don't want to validate it, but there's, there's anxiety from the Chateau Ridge, there's a community association, and their apprehension that things, if the DRRA is not upheld and extended, that things will change. And like I said, I don't, I don't, we didn't make that representation, and I'm not saying that the trust is supportable in this case, but for some reason, they do have those concerns, and I think they should be, you should be made aware of them.
I just wanted to make sure that those who are concerned and might be listening would be comforted by your comments. So that was the reason I asked that. Thank you.
Thank you too for asking that. All right, Lisa. Lisa, do we have to step up for the testimony?
I apologize. I have to step away for a minute. Um, okay, we're ready for testimony?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, first we have Sean Happel. Mr. Happel, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Can you mute your phone or your computer, one or the other? Mr. Happel?
Can you hear me now?
I, I can.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
I, I can.
Can you hear me?
Very, it's hard to hear.
There's some, I don't know if you have your computer and your phone on? No, we could barely hear you.
Maybe check the microphone on your computer and make sure it's set to the right microphone. Or maybe put it on a headset. Maybe check the microphone on your computer. Or maybe put it on a headset. Mr. Happel, you want to try again? Mr. Happel?
We'll come back, Lisa.
Okay. Victor Alenda. Mr. Alenda, are you testifying tonight?
Yes, I am.
Okay, bear with me one second. Can you state your name and address, please?
Very good. My name is Victor Alenda. I live at...
Very good. Uh, my name is Victor Alenda. I live at thirty-seven twenty-two Chateau Ridge Drive, Ellicott City.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Alenda?
Tell me when to start.
Go ahead, you can speak.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, the Howard County Planning Board, thank you for the opportunity to make comments. I have previously submitted the sentiment expressed by our community association in my email to the board on June the twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty. Today, I am speaking as a resident living on a street which runs parallel to the eastern boundary of West Mount. As a partisan party, the prior interactions between Howard County and the owners of DeRagan Manor, I have felt that Howard County was very accommodating to all of the proposals brought forth by the owners of DeRagan Manor in reallocating the bulk of the approximately nine hundred acres at the termination of the arrangement with the Maryland Historical Trust in two thousand and seven. Of the approvals made by Howard County, the one which created most anxiety, as was noted earlier, by Ms. Alder and also Mr. Sang O, uh, the one which created most anxiety was the R E D zoned development on the two hundred and twenty-one acres, now known as West Mount. My concern at the time was that one of our streets, namely Burnside Drive, would be used as an alternate ingress egress route, even though a Howard County Resolution eighty-nine forty-three had previously closed the western terminus of Burnside Drive. Fortunately, the existing D R R A, which was signed in September of twenty-ten, reassured that Burnside Drive would not be used as a connecting point. Subsequently, a partner was known, as known as the Open Space Burnside Lot, crossing the termination of Burnside Drive, was deeded to a member of the community, which further strengthened the closure. The current petition for amending the current D R R A through a five-year extension maintains the same provisions as the original D R R A. Therefore, I fully support its approval and urge the planning board to approve the petition as well. Thank you for the opportunity to present my thoughts on this.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, so next on the list, we have Jack Garney. I, I apologize, I might mispronounce that.
So Gordon, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Are you wishing to testify tonight?
Uh, yes, I would.
Okay, one more. Okay, state your name and address, please.
Uh, it's Jack Gornary and uh, my address is one oh two two four Little Brick House Court, uh, Ellicott City.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I know that, that none of uh, none of the board members were at the meeting, the community meeting that was held uh, uh, a year ago. There was a concern expressed on, on Burnside and, and exiting to Burnside, but the main reason was it was traffic and that was the main concern that was uh, was held throughout the meeting. Uh, Westmont is gonna generate over three thousand vehicle trips per day on already busy roads on Frederick Route Forty and Centennial Lane itself. And that was the main concern of, uh, of many of the residents that were attending the meeting. Uh, the thing I don't understand after having heard uh, Mr. O's explanation is why uh, the Carols would be concerned about extending the D R R A, since everything he pointed out was an obligation that they have as part of the D R R A. Uh, our understanding at the meeting was that it could, if not extended, uh, hold up the completion of Westmont. In fact, Mr. O, uh, and Mr. Rutter both uh, insinuated at the meeting that uh, that other things could be built if the D R R A wasn't extended, that they would build townhouses or something else. And many in the community took that as a threat, that if we didn't support uh, the D R R A, that uh, that uh, a worse uh, uh, development could happen in that area. So I just wanted to clarify that again, since uh, none of you had been at the meeting last year. It was a very contentious meeting.
Thank you. Unless you, I'm sorry, did you have something else to add?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Rollins. Ms. Rollins, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, can you state just your name and address right now?
Okay, my name is Janet Rollins. I live at one oh four oh six Burnside Drive, Ellicott City.
Uh, okay, you may start.
My husband and I support this petition. Um, we've been involved with this land development for the past thirteen years since the historical easement of DeRagan Manor expired. We are resigned to the conditions of the D R R A and we want things to proceed as promised to completion. We do not want this to be an opportunity for all the agreed-upon conditions to be reevaluated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins.
Okay, next on the list, we have Bonnie Sorak. Bonnie, can you hear me? Bonnie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
I can. Do you wish to testify?
Sure.
Okay, one second. Okay, state your name and address, please.
Bonnie Sorak, one zero two two six Shirley Meadow Court, Ellicott City.
Okay, you may.
Um, thank you. Um, I did submit written testimony. Um, I merely want to state that I, I, I work uh, on the um, board with Vic Alenda and while I support uh, the, our, our committee's recommendation, I would further, I suggest that we should have the D R A extended for a ten-year period, which is what the original D R A was um, set for. Um, considering no one knows, I think they said, you know, we don't have a crystal ball. No one knows how long it's gonna take for this development to be completely um, built out. And I don't wanna have to come back here again in five years and go through this again. So um, I don't know why we wouldn't just go ahead and extend it for the, the original ten-year period so that that gives enough time for the development to be completely finished. Um, that's all I really needed to say. Also, just to let you know, I did get, I, I run the communications for the whole um, community. Several people told me that when they tried to sign up um, to just attend this meeting, the only option that we were given was to testify. So you may end up with people that have signed, that just to get to the meeting may have said they were gonna testify and they may not be here. So um, just let you, especially let you know. I don't know what the settings were. But thank you.
It actually states on our website that we livestream now and Yes. you don't wanna testify, you can click on livestream just to watch.
And, and that's why, that's what I told them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um. Next, I have Christina. I'm sorry, Christina, I can't pronounce your last name. G U E R C I O.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Do you wish to testify tonight?
Uh, no, I went through the same process as described it by Bonnie Sorak. Um, I do not wish to testify. There was no option not to testify, but thank you for the option. Thank you.
Um, next I have Joel Hurwitz. Mr. Hurwitz, can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Okay, state your name and address, please, for the record.
Before I say that, I suggest that the person with the uh, audio problems, I heard a delay. That's what happens if you have the streaming and the uh, webex open at the same time.
Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Joel Hurwitz, five six eight one Harpers Farm Road, Columbia.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess my issues go to Mr. Coleman's question, which was my question at, at the submission meeting of what remains to be done under this agreement. I find a lot of what's in the TSR and Mr. Conrad's uh, presentation useless because those things have already been done with the preservation of the land and the transfer of the park. What is really matters to the council is what happens if they either don't act to approve it, or because the term period is so short, which I'm perplexed that Mr. O waited so long after his other client caused the council to remove the existing D R A rules at the time, that the council can just fail to take any action by September twenty-third deadline and let the thing lapse. So what is important to the council and your recommendation to them is what are the things that are left to be done or not to be done? And the fact that the petitioner doesn't have answers to that, I think, is the problem. It's not the things that you've already done with, to preserve the, the home or the fact that it was the one privately owned signer of the Declaration of Independence. That's not relevant. What is relevant is what it means to the council if they don't act. Um, one of the only things I find that D R A, reviewing it now, is the two million dollar fund, which, the way I read it, it's possible there'd be, never be any money, because it's after-tax money. So I'm not sure that's ever gonna be funded. A lot of what Mr. O referred to and some of the other things, I would surmise that they are in the easements and the, the other related documents and not in the D R A, so they are already done in perpetuity, many of those issues. Um, and also to answer the question of the prior person, why is it only five years? Because the council got ticked off about lengths of DRAs and they are now limited to five years. Um, so the recommendation is, can extend it to ten. But what I'd like to see, as I said, a chart of what is left to be done or not done, so that the council's gonna ask that at their work session, apparently in a few weeks. Um, so I think the public and the record needs to be clear about what elements of this complicated agreement are, are going to happen or what's the detriment to the community or the county if the council refuses to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and now Mr. Happel, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, much better.
I apologize for the technical difficulties there. Hopefully it, it brought some entertainment to some of the people listening.
It, we need something to stay awake, right?
I'm, I'm glad to have helped.
Um, okay, give me, if you state your name and address, please?
Uh, yes, Sean Happel, three six zero zero Chateau Ridge Drive.
Uh, okay, you may start.
I was one of the community members who wanted to attend just in case this D R A extension included any changes to the provision uh, that may, that is currently preventing access to Westmont uh, via Burnside Drive. It sounds like that's not the case, that the community of Westmont cannot be connected to Burnside Drive or Chateau Ridge Drive under this extension. Given that, we are in support of the extension and want to thank you for preserving the character of our community.
Thank you. Lisa, was that it?
That was it.
Yeah, I believe, yep, that's the whole list.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. All right, with that from the board, any other questions or a motion?
If there's no further questions, I motion we go to work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we are in work session.
I have no issues with recommending this be recommended for approval.
Seven?
Uh, I also um, believe hearing from the community, uh, those individuals that actually would be affected, uh, should this D R R not remain in place, uh, to hear their comments is a positive and I am in agreement to go ahead and move forward.
Tudy?
Well, I think uh, our experience so far with D R R As are very, very complicated documents. Uh, we do have a copy of this one, which is over two hundred and forty pages. Um, and sometimes adjustments do need to be made. I can understand how maybe permitting and uh, environmental reasons and so forth, sometimes there are some deadlines that are not met, though very well-intentioned. So I don't see any difficulty at all with um, extending it out another five years. I think um, the participants, the, the parties to the D R R A have to be tied to one another to assure completion of the project. So inasmuch as the project is not completed thus far, um, the extension makes perfect sense to me. And I think as long as the community members are assured that there isn't gonna be any change with the Burnside Drive or other um, points within the document, it's simply going to extend the document as it is for another five years. Um, it's very comfortable moving forward.
Thank you. Um, I'm in agreement with you all. I'm sorry, Ed, were you saying? No, Ed?
I'm sorry, did you hear the last sentence?
For me or Tudy?
Uh, for you.
I really didn't say anything. I thought you were, you wanted to say something.
No.
Okay. There's a slight delay, sorry. Um, I agree with what everyone is saying. I also agree that it does make perfect sense to move forward with five years. I know comments and testimony spoke of ten years, but I um, feel good about the five year. So with that, do I hear a motion?
I mean, um, we, um, we advise the uh, the DeRagan D R R A to be extended five years.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved.
Thank you.
So with that, I will say that we will adjourn our, our planning board meeting for Thursday, July second, twenty-twenty, and go into closed work session to discuss uh, rules and procedure. Um, for the rules and procedure, as it is a closed session, I want to make note to the board that there is another link that we would have to go into, um, that is being provided to you via email, um, because it's gonna be